Yumina Trentai Saisnala has Latouran Guam is back for recess. We are in second reading file on Bill number 335-36COR. I'd like to recognize the sponsor of the bill, Speaker Theresa Chilahi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon, colleagues. Madam Speakers, I move to place Bill number 335-36COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture to the third reading file, and I would like to discuss this.
Please proceed.
Bill number 335-36COR is an act to amend Section 84101, Section 84103, Section 84104, 84105, 84107, 84110, 84111, 84112, and 84122, add anew 84124, and to further repeal and reenact 84102. All of Chapter 84, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating emergency medical services provisions in Guam law, establishing initial licensure fees and eligibility, training, and skill requirements for emergency medical service personnel. Bill number 335-36COR was introduced to provide an update to the Chapter 84, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to emergency medical services. These updates to the emergency medical services provision in statutes are to match the national certification standards, establish the practice of paramedics on island, and create an initial fee schedule for the Office of EMS, which enables the issuance of paramedic and other licenses. The updates of this legislation will not only reflect the national standards and bolster the system of emergency care on our island, but also open pathways to programs in the The bill received during its public hearing unanimous support from the Guam Fire Department, the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Guam Community College, as well as other members of the EMS Commission. The Guam Memorial Hospital, in particular, the Division of Emergency Medical Services, which has two co-directors, associate medical directors, Elliot Ross, M.D., M.P.H., and Frankie Manjola, M.D., submitted testimony, and part of it, they say, "Although Guam is a relatively small island, many community members still live upwards of 30 minutes by ambulance from the nearest hospital. These prolonged transport times can lead to long periods without critically needed medical interventions. Guam suffers from over 250 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests annually. There is an evident need for advanced care providers to respond in the prehospital environment. The National Registry Certified Paramedic is the highest national prehospital certification for medical first responders. These highly trained first responders offer the best chance for those with medical emergencies outside of the hospital. Until last month, Guam did not have any paramedic certified first responders for the community outside those working from military installations." Thanks to the hard work of the Guam Fire Department and the Guam Community College in collaboration with the School of EMS, Guam now has graduates of a homegrown paramedic certification course, a course that, moving forward, will be able to graduate additional paramedics to support the island. Guam law currently does not recognize a paramedic level of certification or have a process to license these individuals. So the updated Chapter 84 provides all the provisions for training requirements, certification, and licensure for paramedic providers. This update is required to allow providers to practice in the community at their new higher level of training and care. The GMHA Division of EMS, in collaboration with the Joint Region Marianas EMS Medical Director, has developed a unified standard of care for the island, where all members in our community, both those living on and off military installations, will receive the same standard of prehospital care. This one-island approach to prehospital care is only possible if the Guam laws updated to allow paramedics to practice in the community. The Guam Fire Department, Fire Chief Daniel Stone, during his testimonies, stated that the amendments require that the recognized national standardized testing level for EMS professionals and establishes the level of paramedic as an EMS professional to be licensed on Guam will enable the Guam Fire Department to continue its goal of modernizing our advanced life support units with licensed paramedics. Assistant Fire Chief Darren Bierier, in his testimony, stated that the bill effectively addresses these issues, allows for additional regular changes or updates as determined by the Department of Transportation. He said, "Where once we could only dream of having paramedic-level providers on Guam serving the people, we now have a pathway for paramedics to be licensed to practice." He states that Guam will be able to have a more, and I love this quote, "ER-to-the-door" experience, and that paramedics will be able to perform advanced cardiac life support measures and IVs in the field prior to arrival, which will help patients increase their chances to survive outside the hospital. I pressed them on this a little bit, and they also discussed that paramedics will be trained, and hopefully all of our ALS will be trained, to better identify stroke victims and to treat stroke victims immediately. EMS Commission member Dorothy Duñez, who is also the administrator at the School of Allied Health from the Guam Community College, was also very instrumental in this legislation. She said that their objective is to ensure the training standards for their programs meet the national education standards for EMS, the Department of Transportation, and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. So GCC conducts annual assessments of their programs and curricula in order to maintain that practice and knowledge in the field. They have seen 100% completion, 100% local licensing, and passing of the National Registry for EMTs from their 22nd fire cycle graduates, and that this is a pivotal time for them, with 15 of Guam Fire Department's personnel officially completing the paramedic program, two of the 15 recently becoming nationally registered paramedics after completion of off-island supervised fieldwork. And with the passage of this bill, they will be able to be locally licensed paramedics, and in turn may be able to supervise the fieldwork for other candidates. I want to acknowledge, we have with us in our legislative lobby here today, Mr. Angel Yagas, who is also an officer in the Guam Fire Department, and he did much of the work on this bill, and also he's one of our newly certified paramedics in Guam, hopefully will be licensed if this bill passes. Also, Ms. Brianna Sablon, who is the Program Coordinator and licensed for the EMS program at the HPLO Office, the Health Professional Licensing Office. I'd just like to urge my colleagues to lend their support to this bill, to update our EMS provisions that will entail faster emergency care on our island, the literal ER-to-your-door, to save lives at a faster rate. And I want to congratulate those who have undergone this training and look forward to their further certification and licensing on Guam. Sis Masim, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Chilahi. On the motion to place Bill 335-36, are there any other members wishing to speak? Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sis Masim, Madam Chair, and I certainly rise in full support of Bill 335-36. Of all the many public hearings that I attended, I have to say that it was just wonderful watching all of the different respective organizations coming together, from GCC to the doctor that basically gave us the information on how this works in terms of the licensure under which this service delivery happens in the field, and of course, the firemen, and everyone who came to testify. You know, Madam Chair, sometimes I feel like, kind of in medical training myself, I enjoy evenings with my wife as she's doing her recertification, watching videos, and learning the intricacies of medical care and assistance. My wife is a critical care nurse. I like to say, not only my favorite nurse, but probably the best nurse on Guam. I'm a little biased. But it's really just always constantly reinforced that it really is the direct level of care that comes about when an individual is in distress that can make the difference in terms of outcomes. And I gotta say, every day, I know that at all of our hospitals, but particularly at GMH, miracles happen, you know, when patients come into the ER with all kinds of different emergent situations, very, very critical most of the time. And miracles happen in terms of saving their lives, and then, you know, going to the ICU, and eventually through the entire cycle of being hospitalized, and a lot of them go home once again to be with their families and have that opportunity to spend more time on this earth. And so this is just really the next level, and it's so amazing for Guam now to be at this level, to where treatment in the field is so much more advanced than what it is now, the ability to, you know, start IV lines, to be able to administer certain medications that will certainly make it so much more of a better opportunity for a great outcome or a good outcome in our emergency room and in our hospitalization of critical ill patients because of this level of opportunity that's going to take place in the field. So I just want to congratulate everybody involved, and of course, the author of this bill. I think it was mentioned during the public hearing that this is a game changer. It's a serious game changer in terms of the level of care that we can give our people, you know, simply in the field, and an opportunity for when they arrive to get that direct care that they need to survive whatever they're going through, particularly heart attacks and strokes, but, you know, even other types of events that take place. And so congratulate the author on the introduction of this bill, and congratulate really Team Guam on really what it appeared in the public hearing, with all hands on deck, really ready to make sure that this program is a success, and that we can save more lives and allow for folks who are in trouble or in danger to, as I said, have perhaps more moments with their loved ones. So I look forward to this bill's passage, and certainly I'm sure we're going to see great things from all the team members that will be executing this high level of care in the field. Sis Masim, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Are there any other members wishing to speak? Senator Nelson?
What's this thing going on here? It's kind of high. Just lower the mic. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to rise in support of this piece of legislation. Once again, the good speaker has created another comprehensive bill, knowing that this is something good for our island. I do, at this time, also want to acknowledge the Governor of Guam, Governor Lillian Guerrero, for her outstanding commitment to increasing and expanding the level of emergency care for the island of Guam. And if it wasn't, without her leadership, I don't know where we would have been. But also the fundamentals and the foundation that set forth this policy was under the administration of the former Fire Chief Joey S. Nicholas, who in his blueprint required all firefighters to be nationally registered EMTs. And so really, it's a testament to his vision, as we move forward, increasing the level of care of emergency medicine at the home front, moving towards our hospitals. So really, the foundation for this was a great vision in the former Fire Chief's eyes, and I'm glad that we can move this forward with the Fire Department, and also really thank all of our GFD personnel for their great work, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic, their innovative ideas that kept our island safe, and also their innovative ideas that was able to maintain their force during the COVID-19 pandemic, ensuring that teams were prioritized for transport for those that were positive of COVID-19. And, yeah, I just cannot express enough the amazing work that the Guam Fire Department does, and we are truly grateful as an island, and also as myself, as a citizen, for the Guam Fire Department, always answering the call when there's a need of emergency, and to ensure that we get safely to a continuum level of care to the hospitals. So thank you.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Are there any other members wishing to speak on Bill 335-36? Seeing no members wishing to speak, I would like to recognize the sponsor of the bill to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd also like to, as I recognize Ms. Brianna Sablon, the Program Coordinator for EMS and the Children Program Manager on Guam at the HPLO Office, also Mr. Angel Yagas, who is not only a Guam firefighter, but the EMS Training Coordinator. So they are here with us today as well. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for their remarks on the bill and their support. And I agree with the previous speaker, this is an island-wide effort. It begins with vision, it begins with training, and the hard work of these people who have volunteered or dedicated their lives to be out there on the field. They train, and they are mandatory training now for these other levels, and this is another level for them to aspire to, and for the people of Guam to benefit from. I want to also acknowledge the coordination that we now can see on Guam from Guam Memorial Hospital, Joint Region Marianas, the other hospitals, especially since they've been recognized as a stroke treatment center for Guam, that all of this, this response for in emergencies is going to get better because of the training and the coordination between all of these entities. And I want to commend again the work that these first responders did during COVID, these EMT, ALS, and all of these first responders who during COVID went out there, and they responded in the homes, in the field, and they did the transport, and the coordination that was done by Guam Memorial Hospital, which was our COVID hospital at the time, and took over coordinating all of that first responder action at the time. But I also want to commend them for what they do today and what they do every day, every single day, risk their lives in a direct service for the people of Guam, and from what we can tell from their reports, saving lives. So I want to commend them for all of that, and for all who worked to get this bill done, for GCC, for having the vision to do the program there and to do the training, for those who made it happen to get at least two off-island for certification, and bring them back so that they can help to certify others. And so for all the efforts to raise the standard of care in Guam. So I want to thank my colleagues for their support in advance, and I'd like to also ask that a motion to add cosponsors, Senator Chris Duñez, he was the one who attended the hearing with me, and I was very grateful, and our Majority Leader, Senator Nelson.
On the motion to add cosponsors, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries.
Just repeat my motion to place a bill on third reading.
Okay. On the motion to place Bill 335-36 as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries.
Senator Anthony Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Resolution 348-36COR as introduced by myself, Anthony Ada, Senator Delana Cruz Nelson, and Christopher M. Duñez, relative to requesting the Guam Department of Education to incorporate financial literacy into its high school curriculum as a standalone course and require successful completion of the course as a graduation prerequisite beginning with school year 2023, 2024 to the third reading. I'd like to speak on the motion, please.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This resolution requests, like I said, it's a request that the Guam Education Board adopt the policy to require high school students to successfully complete a course in financial literacy as a graduation prerequisite. You know, as we all, all of us know, Madam Speaker, financial literacy is important to every adult, and currently the GDOE's curriculum for financial literacy is limited to those who have completed two years of complex math. Unfortunately, students who have not taken Algebra I and geometry still need to learn how to open bank accounts, apply for credit cards and loans, buy a home or a car, balance a checkbook, or even how to, the importance of a credit score as they get into the workforce, and how to fill out a W-4, avoid overpaying on taxes, how to plan for retirement, how to save for the short and long-term goals, and how to pay income taxes. Resolution 3438-36 is a request by this legislature to ask the Guam Education Board to implement such a policy by the school year 2023, 24, and it's not difficult. All they have to do is eliminate Algebra I and geometry prerequisites and make it a high school graduation requirement. We are now seeing more and more school districts throughout the nation adopting financial literacy in their curricula. I hope that the Board of Education will make this a part of every child's education in the near future. Now, during the public hearing, a request was made by the student representatives to delay the implementation of the financial literacy program. As this resolution is a request to the Education Board and not a bill that will create a legal mandate, the Board is free to choose whether to implement this for this upcoming class or not, and when it will be effective. As a sponsor of this resolution, however, I believe that every delay in offering such a class only hurts the future of our children after they graduate, so I believe it's important to create a financial literacy graduation requirement as soon as possible. We take in the students' requests, and we hope that the Board as well looks at what has been presented to them, how is it that we can help our children to gain that knowledge of the importance of financial literacy, especially now that how times are really difficult, what is it they can do to make their lives easier, how can they improve in the quality of life that they want to have for the future. So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues for their support in this resolution, and I thank you in advance as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the resolution? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of Resolution 348, and, you know, also echo the comments that were just made by Senator Tony Ada, who's the main sponsor of this resolution. You know, education ultimately, you know, our desire certainly in wanting to see our children educated is so that they are prepared for their future, so that they have the knowledge and awareness, and hopefully the capability of making good decisions for their own lives and their own future. And, you know, I'd like to take for granted that everyone has the same opportunity, but we know everybody doesn't. And I think there's just some fundamental things in education, particularly public education, that we fund that is important. You know, we can teach math and all those other things. I mean, I've never had a need to do anything with geometry other than get through the class, you know, in terms of my day-to-day life, and I know that applies for most people. Having this awareness, especially at a young age, I mean, you'd like to think that maybe every child has the opportunity to learn this in their household from their parents. I mean, me, you know, I learned my financial sense of responsibility from both my parents because, you know, my dad had a very simple rule, "Don't live beyond your means." Maybe you mortgage a house, maybe short-term you mortgage a car, and anything else is unnecessary. And so I kind of, even at this day and age, I still, even though I fortunately get to make all my financial decisions, you know, I still take that to heart, and thank God because it's put me in a better position than probably left up to my own devices I would have been in terms of decisions I would have made financially. But we have a lot of young people that don't have those opportunities, and we want to make sure that when they do get through our education system, they have the life skills that they need to succeed. That's really what we want to see. And I like the fact that this is a recommendation to the Board and to our education system here on the island rather than a mandate or a law, because of course, we did, you know, create the Board of Education to make these policy decisions. But as time's going on, I think this, you know, basic life skills, just basic life skills of responsibility when you become an adult and you have to go to work and start making those tough decisions on how do you manage your finances, how do you take care of your key obligations? That's a lot of things people struggle, it creates a lot of stress for people. Some people, you know, go to the extreme because they can't handle these things, and their lives, unfortunately, for whatever reason, don't go in a good way because they're overwhelmed. You know, it's like every turn they make, it's another challenge, then another challenge. Everybody's not born, as they say, with a gold spoon in their mouth, and even those that are, if they don't manage the money they get, they probably will squander it or lose it. And ultimately, it comes down to quality of life. You know, money can't always buy that, but making good decisions in your life can help contribute to a path of having quality of life for you and your family. So I most definitely wholeheartedly support Resolution 348, and I'm hopeful also that the Education Board will see the wisdom and the value of imparting these basic critical skills to our children in our community so that as they become young adults, as they take over the responsibilities in the realm in this community, that they're prepared to ensure their own good quality of life, and should they have a family and children, they can lay the path for them as well. I think we all want to see good, and I think this resolution certainly will help accomplish that. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this resolution.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the Resolution 348, Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Sis Masim, Madam Speaker, and I too rise in full support of Resolution 348-36. I was happy to be invited to be a cosponsor of the resolution, and much like the retiring Speaker, Madam Chair, I was very fortunate to learn how to manage resources, manage money as a young boy by my father, who was very insistent on us understanding to respect money and to respect resources and how to manage them properly. Also, I'll show my age a little bit, Madam Speaker. I'm not even sure if they do this in school much, very much anymore, but as one of my electives, I took a course, Home Economics, and, you know, a lot of my friends would tease me and said, "What, are you going to learn how to bake, you know, cook, make this?" And we actually did, but a lot of it also was the fundamentals, the fundamentals of managing a budget, of how to go out to, we did field trips to go to stores and learn how to shop, and the economics of the reality of managing life, you know, on many different levels. Another opportunity that I didn't realize, you know, how very important and how the great impact in terms of credit is, and that was when I was fortunate to be the president of Guam Housing Corporation, and many times, you know, we have individuals that would come to us, and their finances now are in pretty good working order, but it was some of the decisions made earlier that kind of put them out of the range of borrowing or forced them to have to borrow at a much higher interest rate because of the fact that, you know, they didn't manage well earlier in life, and it was really counting against them. A lot of times, we'd give them advice to delay maybe their application and work on improving their credit score because it would mean thousands of dollars in savings. improving their credit score because it would mean thousands of dollars in savings, you know, down the line, and they've had, they'd have much more disposable income if they would just get that credit score a little higher. So, all these things play into this, really what I consider a gift, you know, that hopefully the Board will see the wisdom in adopting this. It's not a mandate per se, it's a suggestion, if you will, but I think it's a very strongly worded suggestion, and I think it really is. If anything we can do, much like the retiring speaker, once again, myself, I finished algebra and struggled through a little bit of geometry and got out of there because I didn't think I would need it, and I haven't yet. My engineering skills aren't that great. But, you know, it was the basics, right? It really was the basics from my father through the educational process of the schooling that I did, and that insistence to take courses that would give us, you know, kind of those basic life skills. And so, hopefully, you know, our good Board of Education and our Department of Education will see the wisdom in this and, you know, adopt it as soon as practicable. And I, once again, I thank the author for allowing me to be a cosponsor, and I think this will be a great opportunity for our educational system overall. Sidozmasi, Madam Chair.
Sidozmasi. Senator, on the Resolution 348-36, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just, I want to thank Senator Adda for this proposed resolution and also giving the opportunity to co-sponsor. Usually, when it comes to adding additional requirements to the Guam Department of Education, there's a reluctance as a former teacher in me to do so, and the reason I signed on to this is because we know that the financial landscape is changing. We know that there's crypto in play, we know that there's stocks that are in play, and we know that the youth and the younger generations have access to this, and this would be beneficial for them, especially for them to start preparing and planning financially for the eventuality of retirement. And it's, I wish I started at an earlier age, planning for my retirement. And so, you know, also, the reason why I supported this legislation or this resolution is that it's a simple request, right? It's a request for GDOE to implement financial literacy into the classroom and to make it a graduation requirement. It's not a demand, and, you know, it is an opportunity also to hire more teachers that are very well-versed in the financial landscape that we see today. And so, with technology advancing, with the rise of inflation, with interest rates on homes and cars continually being manipulated or continually rising and dropping, it's important for our future generation to understand the impact of their financial well-being. And so, I rise in support of this resolution, and I know that this has been an effort that has been done in previous legislatures in the past, so I hope that in this legislature, we can move forward with this request, a request. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of the resolution, and I want to thank the good author as well as the cosponsors of this resolution for the foresight and for bringing this idea, you know, to the floor so that it can be presented to the Board and to the Department of Education as a suggestion, as an idea of, I guess, a lesson that, you know, many if not all of the students can truly appreciate and utilize later on in their lives. I think, you know, I, like many of us in here, you know, if we can recall back to our days, you know, in school, sometimes even days in college, okay, of the courses that we were required to take, and then you sit there and you try to figure out, okay, what does this course have to do with the price of Tang and Happy Mart? And, you know, based on some of the lessons that we were required to learn and required to pass in order to be able to get that degree, you know, decades down the road, you start, you begin to realize, I never needed that information, okay, to be able to move on in life. But I think that what this provides, this resolution provides, is the opportunity to put together a curriculum, put together some courses where it will be utilized, and it doesn't necessarily have to be utilized right when they get out of high school, it could be utilized while they're in high school. Okay? You know, like the previous speaker, you know, the good senator from Gil, Talena, you're from Gil? Minila, whatever. You know, I would have appreciated this course too, to be able to help, you know, with the way my finances are, and my finances would be upon retirement. This would have been a great idea. And it goes in line with, again, the many pressures or the many opportunities that younger individuals now have in as far as the opportunity for investments or the opportunity to be able to, for careers. So, it's a great start, and it's a great thing. And I want to end this by saying that when I was asked several years ago at one point in time to present in my alma mater, you know, a class or a discussion to students there of financial, in the area of basically understanding finances, and it was amazing how astonished and how surprised many of the students were when we started to talk about, okay, when you're done with, when you're done with high school and you're done with college, or you're in, you know, now you've got your own house, your own home, your own apartment, your own car, your own kids, your own family, what it's going to cost for you to get through day by day, and a lot of these kids were astonished. So, this kind of course, this kind of curriculum here would be able to introduce them to those, what will be expected of them, for lack of a better term, and to give them a head start so that it can help to reduce, hopefully help to reduce some of the strain and the stresses that they may have when it comes to dealing with their finances. So, again, I stand in support of this resolution, and I encourage the rest of my colleagues that we pass this resolution with unanimous support. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the resolution, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the resolution? If not, then the sponsor may close on the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank all my colleagues for their input on this resolution, and once again, it's just a simple request to the Education Board to, you know, start teaching our children financial literacy and, you know, hopefully that as they get older, they make the correct, they make the right decisions in life that, you know, will give them that ability to be better off for themselves with buying their first home or buying their first car. I mean, because even nowadays, you try to, you know, rent an apartment, and they want to see what your credit score is, and, you know, that's all we need is for some of our kids to go out there and say, "What's a credit score?" So, you know, I appreciate all the input into this resolution, and I'd like to make a couple amendments, Madam Speaker, and first, that's to add Senator Brown and Senator Blas as cosponsors, and if there's no objection, I actually like to add the rest of my colleagues as cosponsors to this resolution.
On the motion to add Senators Brown and Blas and all the other senators in alphabetical order as cosponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The other amendment is to have legal technical corrections to the resolution that's the superintendent, as we know that Superintendent Fernandez has left, so we can just put the acting superintendent and then date corrections as well.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I move that Resolution 348-36COR down to the third reading.
On that motion, to put Resolution Number 348-36COR onto the third reading files, there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Colleagues, it seems we've come to the part of our second reading file where we have bills that all require committee of the whole or are entitled to committee of the whole. And committee of the whole, well, please note that because we passed Bill Number 292-36 on file, that that would be the first bill for committee of the whole. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you're recognized. Just in case.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion that we recess till 8:00 a.m. Monday morning to resolve in the committee a hold for Bill 292-36.
A motion to recess until 8:00 a.m. on Monday?
That's correct, a recess.
We're going to take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We have about five or six bills that need to be heard in the committee of the whole, and so, I'm still requesting that we keep the motion to 8:00 a.m. on Monday morning to recess until 8:00 a.m. Monday morning.
All right. On the motion to recess until 8:00 a.m. Monday morning, is there any objection? Is an objection? All in favor, raise your hand. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to recess till 2:00 p.m. on Monday morning.
On the motion to recess until 2:00 p.m. on Monday, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we're recess until 2:00 p.m. on Monday.